I'd like to call the meeting to order and at this time I would like to do a roll call for the Rec Commission members.
Tanya Willoughby.
Mary Critzer.
Mike Saylor.
Diane Benton.
Brad Efferlin.
Court Hall.
Jim Williams.
And it looks like we have Mike Harris coming in the room as well. Doris Oliver contacted me today and unfortunately she had some personal issues that came up and will not be able to attend tonight.
I would like to, the previous minutes, are there any corrections or concerns about the way they submitted?
Would we first?
Second.
First second.
All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, at this time, I would like to see if you have any citizen comments. Okay, if you'd like to stand and introduce yourself and everybody is limited to five minutes.
Okay. My name is Jeff Rolland, I'm the founder and director of the New York Rowley and Rock Lacrosse Club. This is Katie Williams, who's our vice president and we're both also coaches of the club. We just, we're coming to see the plan, we're excited, we're looking forward to seeing a plan that's gonna allow the most flexible use of an important and valuable recreation space. As everyone knows, field space is short in the area and the county. Our club by itself is, we've grown 20% over the last five years consistently and we are looking at fielding an additional four to probably five teams next year alone, so that's, you can imagine, four to five more practice fields that we would need. So we were looking forward to, like I said, a place that will allow the most flexible use of the field. Glad to see the three full-size multipurpose fields there, would really love to see either that last dedicated baseball field and a more flexible multipurpose purpose field or the opening up or maybe considering the outfield use as shorter youth-sized fields or the heart greater complex outfield to use as short-sized field because there is a huge need for multipurpose youth fields for soccer, I would imagine football and I know for lacrosse. And that's all we want to say, so thank you. Thank you everyone for your work on the project.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Okay, at this time, Mary.
Yes, I'd like to call a work session between the Christiansburg Town Council and the Christiansburg Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission to order. Thank you.
I'd just like to once thank everyone for attending tonight. This is, you know, an exciting time for the town of Christiansburg. We've been working hard on the Truman Wilson Park now for a couple of years. You know, it's been a great relationship working with Gay and Neil and their fellow consultants that they've been working with in preparing this conceptual master plan that we have before us tonight. It's been great to listen to the citizens' input as well as the steering committee, our recreation commission, as well as town council. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Gay and Neil Consultants and Mr. Trevor Kinsey.
Thanks, appreciate it. Thank you, Brad. We'll do introductions here first, just so we get that out of the way. I'll start with the Neil of Gay and Neil, John Neil, President of Gay and Neil here. I'm Trevor Kinsey, Director of Engineering, and you all want to introduce yourselves.
JD Price, I'm an architect with AWPR.
And I'm Kyle Theodore, I am a landscape architect and I'm a park planner and I'm with Wood and Partners.
All right, just so you can control your excitement, the stuff you're really here and excited to hear about, these two are going to share. Mine's the necessary part, it's kind of the piece to set up how we got here, where we're going, things like this. So bear with me, the best is coming in just a minute. This is what we're gonna do, I'm gonna remind you of the process, how we got here. I know I've touched on this kind of each time we've met, but I think it's important that we don't lose sight of how we got here and what here is, the program, and then we'll show you graphically what these things look like and then talk about what's to come because tonight is not the end of this process, our scope of services has some yet deliverables to come. The process, so I'll just fly through the background here. Just across the hall, you remember back in May 2015, we began with a public input process, gathering input from folks like this and others. We also at the same time met with a lot of the Rec Commission, sort of the staff level steering committee with the town, town council, and through all that, started to hear what people wanted. In addition to what the feedback the town was, we also, we also then, that summer, began a process with the consultant, PROS Consulting, where they studied the demographics and the data about Christiansburg, about the market, that's their business, is to understand the market of recreation, what is the market asking for, it's a supply and demand issue like any other economic question, and they helped us walk through that and they gave us a report guiding, here's the sort of things to market would want to respond to, here's the things the market's not so interested in. And that coupled with our own, what we wanted in town Christiansburg, the feedback received from here, started to shape up the program. During all that process, engineering surveying was going on, we gathered a complete survey of the park. Then kind of moving from out of the summer and into the fall, we began to kind of go down the road, upon the road of studying the conceptual roadway. This connector corridor through here was really is the spine, it was critical to get that thing right, get it on the table, and then interestingly, the timing of this new House Build Two funding for BDOT, the HB2 funding applications drove this process that suddenly, by the end of September, we actually had to have prepared a real strong concept plan of not just the road through the park so we could develop the park, but we needed a conceptual cost system all the way through, two phases, from Pepper's Ferry to Camry, from Camry all the way down to North Franklin. It was a large piece of work that kind of took up some time during the, in that summer and fall. Interestingly, so far, positive feedback coming through the HB2 process, that's still working its way up the chain. All right, so from there, we finally started to do what everybody wanted us to do, which is put pen to paper and start showing some concepts. We took a program that we had, put the connector corridor in there, we talked about out parcels, and we began to finally start to try to fit the program in. Kyle and her folks developed four initial concepts, trying to see how to fit it, and it didn't all fit. We had preferred one of those, then we went back to the drawing board and then kind of took that one preferred concept and beat it around a bit and modified, came up with two variations of what that was, and brought it back to everybody again, and out of that, we ended up with a concept. That showed up right before Christmas, we had in our hands at least a draft version of this concept, wasn't the final version, but it was the start. Then we rolled into the new year, after the holidays were over, we kicked off the building discussions, we started meeting, now we have a plan for the park, we need to look at what a building's gonna be. And JD especially worked closely with the Rec Commission and with the staff here, walked through those and in fact, not only just clarified what's in each building, in one case, we actually came up with a building that we didn't quite yet amongst all of us realize needed to be on the plan, and we got that added to the plan. Those things kind of pushed back on the plan, the site plan, and started to fit their way in, and over the last two months, we managed to, JD has managed to actually work out the building concepts and put these together. And meanwhile, see everything else I'm doing gets just lumped into here, the rest of the stuff, it's not as pretty to look at, but thoughts about the traffic study, the roadway, utilities, stormwater management, we've been working on kind of feasibility studies behind the scenes for all of that, and the gas line, we'll touch on more of that in a minute, that's been sitting quite a few hours of my time wrestling back and forth with Spectra Energy and trying to get some direction, and you'll see in a minute how that starts to shake the plan. And that was the reason why the actual draft version in mid-December wasn't the final version, we had to make some changes. So that's kind of how we got here. Hopefully, the bottom line takeaway is, it's been a thoughtful, careful, long process, lots of input, give and take, we didn't just disappear and go back and come back with a plan that you have to live with, it's been a plan that you all helped develop, beginning with this program, and I know I've reviewed this with you before, but I want to review it again because, and actually, I'm gonna, maybe we'll just do it like in class, if you want to just take one and pass it down, this is, I brought a draft marked up version of this back to council in November, I believe, and presented it, and for now, no changes to that, this is the final version of the program, but basically, it is the amphitheater, this kind of cultural piece in the middle. It is passive recreation space, it's 20 to 50% of the program's space. Pickling shelters scattered throughout, they talk, they programmed up, small, medium, large. The active recreation broke down into two priorities, that was, that came directly out of the quantity of feedback received in the public input process and from the staff, and also from the demographics and the market assessment that PROS did, it really pushed forward this need for more multipurpose rectangular fields, and but the town was strongly of the opinion that we also still needed some softball, so that came on as well, but as a second priority. Also then, it was still the all-accessible kind of signature playground, the dog park, trails, both to connect to the obvious Huckleberry Trail extensions beyond, but also internally trying to create a network of trails. The beach volleyball, the splash pad or spray ground, we'll see more about that in a bit, and then of course, the necessary maintenance building, those kind of facilities, the corresponding parking that goes along with all this. All of that is itemized and detailed within these, it's what we talked about each of the last times we've met, this is, I emphasize, it's your program, it wasn't a program that we brought a template from PROS, didn't bring a template of what worked great in Indiana or over here in Charlottesville, this is developed from this community based on demographics and input from this community, so that's what you're gonna see in the program, I mean in the plan. And without further ado, we'll get to the plan. But first, within the plan, let me lay the framework so you can see the pretty stuff, the critical pieces of, I mentioned that we had done this HB2 application, we helped the town staff to walk through that conceptual design all the way through. Phase one of this project is connector road, it's not phase one of the park project necessarily, it's, but the first phase of the connector road takes it from Pepper's Ferry, right at the intersection of Quin's Through Boulevard, and carries through past Camry Crossing and ties in down here at Camry, next to the storage facilities there. Then, moving on from there, phase two picks up, you see that same little roundabout that was at the bottom left of the first page, and now in the top right, that's the connection with the roundabout at Camry. That then carries on and slides in past the back lines gate and oak tree and comes all the way out next to the bank and Waffle House in North Franklin, just across from Trinity Baptist. That is what was kind of going on beside, behind the scenes, or sort of outside the box of the park, but as part of our scope services, we were looking at all of that and did make some application funding for all that back at the end of September. Now, there's the park and the vision for the future, and I'll let Kyle walk you through this.
Do you want to, I guess the can's closed, it's camera. I'm afraid if I stand up, I'm gonna block these books.
Yeah, just stay there.
Can you move it? So Trevor's covered a lot of ground, and just to orient y'all, because we've looked at so many different diagrams in the past couple of minutes.
This is Pepper's Ferry, this is that new connector road he's been talking about. This is Camry Crossing, Windmill Hills, Windsor Estates, this is the K's Drive area, and then over here, I think which is a landmark, is Merchant's Tire, right in this zone. So I'm gonna start by talking about the things that are on the other side of the proposed connector road, which starts closest to Pepper's Ferry with two commercial out parcels of about two and a half acres each. They would share a curb cut here off of the new connector road, and an easement would serve, a cross easement would serve this first parcel, and then they'd also have a line in and a ride out, but these are commercial out parcels, a small store or detention pond, and then we'll come back and talk about this a little bit more in a few seconds, but this is a trailhead area, which would be part of the park, and it is a small parking lot, little picnic shelter, but most importantly-
A trail connection that gets folks on the Huckleberry Trail.
So it's backing up to the Huckleberry Trail here. West of the connector is, is the, really the heart of the park, and it's a blending, as Trevor mentioned earlier, one of the program elements was to retain 50% open space, and so this is a good diagram to look at to understand that, if you pay attention to this white-colored area throughout the park, that represents anything that's unstructured, so it's open space, meadows, but it's not developed as an active use facility. Before we move on, I want to mention that we also planned for a buffer that'll go all the way around the park on these sides, and that would consist of enhanced landscaping and some perimeter fencing. And then, as Trevor mentioned earlier, we did face a little bit of a hurdle with this existing gas line, and there were very specific things that we could and couldn't do based on what we learned from Spectra Energy, and Trevor you mentioned-
Yeah, I won't bore you with the details, but I want you to understand how much that was a shaping influence. As we've talked about multiple times, the gas line that runs, you know, supplier again there, Kyle, runs from the bottom left to the top, right there, all the way through the center of this thing, is an existing eight-inch transmission line. You've probably all seen the gas meter parked between the back of the bookstore and the Walmart parking lot down there, a four-six businesses, the largest gas meter in the state of Virginia, they tell me, and so that gas is serving all of the town of Christiansburg and Virginia Tech's power plant, which serves them most power to Blacksburg, so it's an important gas line. It cuts through there, there's, we're not allowed to do any cutting of grade over that, of course, if you've seen the site, it does a lot of this anyways, so we can't cut grades on that at all, and then where we can fill, we really are limited, they want 10 feet of cover maximum, most places they have three to five already, very tight constraints of what we can accomplish across that gas line. On top of the grade issues, they also insisted as part of that easement they have through there, utilities have to cross under it in sort of perpendicular manner, and then the roadways really have to cross as close to perpendicular process as we can get, so you can't run a roadway diagonally across this even. So all of those things started to put pressure on, our initial, right before Christmas, the plan we had didn't meet all those criteria. When we finally worked out the grading on it, when we worked out, looked at the layout with them and had several conference calls, they basically kind of said, there's no way we would prove this, this, and this. So we had to start massaging the entrance location, we massaged the parking, we changed some grade, we even lost probably 12 to 20 parking spaces as a result of trying to change the grades conceptually to get off of this thing. What was also done, they, they won't approve anything until you're ready to go to construction, but they felt like we had responded well, they liked what they saw. The one thing that's important to know is that the connector road, where it, those four lanes of roadway cross the gas line, the grade's already at a big pitch, the gas line's at a big pitch, and we're trying to bring a roadway across there, effectively, we cannot do that without violating those grade constraints they have. So the town is basically gonna have to foot the bill to redo a piece of that gas line, maybe 150 feet of it crossed that section. That's the bad news, the bad news is that's expensive and it's our burden to deal with. The good news is, oddly enough, and I don't know if it's every couple of decades or something that they do this sort of testing, but this summer in July, we're shutting that whole stretch down and doing some testing on this line. That involves, they're running several thousand feet, I think, thousands of feet of new line to bypass this whole region so they can do the testing on this. So I'm already actively trying to kind of insert us into that process of, oh, while you got the line down, let us come in and replace this thing, or pay you to do that for us. Again, you're talking about something that even then is six figures, I can't get them to tell me what number that is, but it's not tens of thousands, it's over $100,000 just to deal with that piece, but I, the gist I was giving is you may be looking at seven figures if you had to do this on your own and run your own bypass line to shut the gas line down yourself, and probably years of planning, so the fact that we have an opportunity and window opening up this July to deal with that is really incredibly fortunate, and so we're gonna insert ourselves into that process and get that taken care of this summer. That was the only place we could not satisfy criteria on the line.
The line is six feet, foot under?
Yeah, anywhere from three to five, or even close to seven when you hit the railroad there.
Oh, really?
Because it's plunging down to go under.
Thanks, Trevor. So as he mentioned, some of the implications of that really affected the secondary area coming into the park, but this is intended to be the primary entrance into the park and it will be served by a loop road, so it'll come up and loop back around and come back out here, there's a secondary entrance here, this is again, a full curb cut which would align with those out parcels that I mentioned, and serve the park. Now we're gonna zoom in on each of these areas that are outlined with the blue dash, so it's a little bit easier to see. We're gonna look at this area, which is the core area, we're gonna look at this area, which is the service area, and there's a dog park, and then I'll show you an enlargement of that trailhead area that I mentioned earlier. And we'll start with the core area, so again, just for orientation purposes, this is that connector road, this is the primary entrance, and as you come in on the primary entrance to your right, is a small parking area and then a grassy field area, which will roll down to a new pond. This area will serve as an amphitheater, but it'll also just serve as a large open space, that's working towards that 50% open space that I mentioned. And the focal point of it will be this open-air pavilion, which will be used for, it can be used for concerts, but it can also be used on a daily basis as a large picnic shelter for special events or for corporate outings or family reunions or that sort, that sort of activity, and JD's gonna share some imagery of that with you in a few minutes. But again, that backs up to this new pond, and then moving a little bit further along, you come into this, this area of the park, which is a destination playground in this lobe, and then a water park or, water park, excuse me, splash pad or some people call them spray ground on this side, those are both enclosed with enclosure fencing for safety purposes, and then they have safety surfacing underneath those activities, and serving that is a restroom and pavilion, it's really not an open-air pavilion, but there's a rental space that's part of this building and has restrooms serving it as well.
Ms. Taylor?
Sure.
One quick question about the affirmative fencing there between the splash pad and the signature park. I take it that throughout the entire plan, it's, there's continuity amongst the, for the different, and the fencing's gonna be the same similarities between everything, is that correct?
That's a good question. We've actually talked, we haven't done any initial planning yet on this, we're, I'd love to get your input into that, but we are talking about more of a three-rail fence treatment along the connector road, marking that this is the park, and then in these sorts of areas, it's a more intense fencing so that kids can't crawl through it, but haven't designed anything yet. And then the perimeter fence that I mentioned that'll go around the perimeter of the property will probably be a different style, it'll probably be more agrarian, in keeping with what's there now. I was driving around today looking at it, and there's just a series of different types of fencing all the way around that perimeter, and so we want to bring a little bit of continuity on the park side there. That's a really good question. So picking back up, in the core area here, we've got parking that supports those with the destination or iconic all-inclusive, this is an all-inclusive playground, and then the splash pad area, and directly adjacent to that is four volleyball, sand volleyball courts, and then a small picnic shelter that would support activity there, as well as a little bit more open lawn area, again, parking lot directly adjacent to that, supporting those activities. I mentioned the splash pad or the spray ground, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with it, this is a project we worked on, it's in, it's actually in Atlanta, but it's called Fourth Door Park, and you'll see here an example of a splash pad, and it can, it can occur in two different types. The foreground image here is just of spray jets, and so it's nothing, everything's flushed with gray, with the exception of the water that jets up. The alternative to that is these structures and some water jet will come up and spray off the top or in other areas, and so you can, you can have this approach, or you can have that approach, or you can have a blending of both, but what we highly recommend is try to separate age groups, just like on a playground, so you can have a small children's area and then a larger, or an older, older children's area, but just some examples of what that might look like. Now we're gonna move into the next area, which is the dog park and support area, that was on the right-hand side of the plan as we looked at it, close to Merchant Tire, and you'll see an enlargement here of that area. Here's the end of the loop road as it ties back in, and this is the secondary entrance, this is the connector road. You would come in and take a spur road that serves that dog park, this light, brightly-colored green area represents the dog park, it would be split into two halves, a larger dog area and a small dog area, both would be again enclosed by enclosure fence, and then they would share a picnic pavilion with restrooms, then there's a small parking area that would be directly adjacent to that area. And as you continue on, on the spine road, you eventually get in into the service area or the maintenance area that would serve the park, and we've got two buildings as part of that complex, all enclosed by a security fence, and one would be a condition space, JD will talk about that in a few more minutes, the other would be a pole barn for storage of outdoor materials. The second diagram in the right-hand corner is an enlargement of that trailhead that I mentioned earlier that's directly off the connector road, it's a small parking lot, a small pavilion, connecting to the Huckleberry Trail, so that folks who are interested in jumping on the trail can come, park your car, and get directly on the trail here as part of the park.
Let's capture the discussion. How many places will we have to park?
I'm sorry?
How many places will we have to park?
How many places?
How many spots would it be to park?
Oh, parking spaces. That's a good question, there's about 400 and, 400 to 450 spaces, and that includes a little area of grass parking right here, which is for overflow parking, we didn't want to paint the whole park, again, we're trying to focus on that open space, the green space. Now I'm gonna back up and I'm gonna look at the left-hand side of the park, as you will, which is where the outdoor athletic recreation facilities are concentrated. And again, this is starting at the connector road, the primary entrance, we talked about the amphitheater and pavilion on the right-hand side, and on the left-hand side, there'll be a mirror image, a small parking area, and as you move in this road, you'll bypass a 220-foot softball field, there'll be a little bit of a grade change here, Trevor talked about some of the challenges of this gas line, and one of the challenges that we had is that we'll have about a-
10-foot?
Retaining wall, it'll be landscaped and softened, but you'll, you'll be looking up at that softball field as you move in the loop road. And then as you continue on, you'll come up into a parking lot which will serve three multipurpose rectangular fields, these are all 225 by 360, so the full-size soccer field size, which will allow you the most flexibility, and they would be all enclosed by enclosure fence, and then served by concessions and restroom building, as well as a ticketing facility which would allow for use-
For tournaments, if that is desirous.
All of these areas, including the areas that I've talked about previously, are interconnected through a perimeter leisure trail, and in this instance, it moves around the outer perimeter of the facility, but it ties into a greater network that runs through the entire park and is also supported here by parking.
Could you go with that again? What do you mean by enclosure fence?
Enclosure fence is controlled access into that particular facility is forced through a specific- is forced through a specific gate or through a ticketed venue.
Before we move on, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Brad for, how?
How.
How? The fields are supposed to be a crossover, the multipurpose. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
Sure. In size for a soccer field, it can also be used, which will also serve as lacrosse or football. And then we indicated, and it's really difficult to tell from the diagram, but they can also be used for softball or baseball as well. And they would be turf as opposed to grass.
Now, I've heard a couple of times moving on to the softball field. And Trevor, you mentioned it in a meeting five months ago, six months ago, you mentioned it tonight. A lot of need-based fields, open spaces, splash pads, things like that, amphitheater. That was all through a marketing study, but I heard especially tonight, you mentioned that the town wanted a softball field. And I mentioned this council the night. I was never approached for any input in this. So I guess I'd like to know how we came up with including a softball field in this park.
Well, I can talk a little bit about it, though. Some of it came from input from our previous public input meeting. Some of it also came from the standpoint that we really don't have a true softball field in the town of Christiansburg. We have baseball fields at Harcrater with grassed-in fields, which is not a true model that's set up for girls' softball. The fields that we currently use right now for softball, which would be at Kiwanis Field, that field is probably, I think it's like 175, 180 foot. We've got extended fences to try to basically reach the 200-foot, the 220-foot item to basically utilize it for softball, but it's not an ideal situation. Fallen Branch, which is two fields that we use, which are not necessarily ours. It's the school systems field, but we do maintain those fields. The closest thing that we have to that would be the larger field at Fallen Branch, but it's still not the ideal situation of a girls' softball field. So from our, you know, from the input that we received from some of the folks at the public input meeting, from some of the folks that we've had here within our recreation commission, that's where the mindset came from, the softball field. The original concept, the first one that came about, basically there was a couple of different items on there. One of them had three softball fields, one of them had two softball fields. And, you know, at the end of the day, basically what we did is we felt like that it was important to go down to having at least one softball field to try to meet some of the needs of the folks that play that particular sport because it was a priority, but it was priority two. And we geared most of our focus towards the rectangular fields because it was a priority one. With the three larger fields, we felt as if basically it's going to be an open artificial surface area. So we could easily have younger age groups play on six fields on the three major fields there. So that's sort of where that came from, from the softball side of it.
Could that field be, like when Harcrater has their World Series, could that field be used in conjunction with the World Series or baseball?
Are you talking about the actual skint surface field? The softball field?
Yeah.
It could possibly be used. It wouldn't be ideal. The grassed-in fields for a baseball tournament is what you would use for like a World Series. We do play on like Kiwanis Field and Fallen Branch and places like that, but that's not your ideal situation. Our premier tournament headquarters would be for a baseball World Series would be at Harcrater in that particular situation.
And Steve, you mentioned, could this be used for baseball? Is that right for the baseball World Series?
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
It cannot. It's, the smallest bit of Harcrater is still about, I would say, 45 feet longer than this on the fence.
Okay.
I mean, this could be used for like an eight-year tournament.
It could be very small.
Couple of follow-ups on this, Brad. The other three fields, I mean lacrosse, the soccer, is it there with football? Would those, is that something could be used for tournaments, particularly with girls' softball tournaments as well?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And that, I mean, I'd just like to say something about that. I mean, Christiansburg's doing a lot in baseball. Softball's been a little bit tougher. And while we have some great fields and there are good fields and stuff like that, the ones at the school, the restroom facilities, it's been somewhat of a drawback here. And I think that this would probably solve some of that. So we know, I guess, the travel sports has been pretty big.
Well, I think if I understand correctly in talking to Brad, these will all be turf fields. So even though you see a layout of an infield, all you're going to do is that's just a race when it's over with and you turn it back into a multipurpose field.
That's correct. I mean, it'll basically just be an open artificial surface area. And, you know, what you would need is as far as the maintenance of an artificial surface area is basically a grooming machine. And if you would paint it, you would take the lines off if you wanted to, those types of things. As far as the rectangular fields go, that's correct.
I think that there can be some permanent lining obviously on the big rectangular fields for the soccer and for, I imagine that way for
You could get it over things. Actually, what we did at Virginia Tech racing, a similar design, but twice as big basically. They just put one single white box around the outline of that rectangle, just that 225 by 360. That's it. Everything else is temporary. They painted on, I mean, temporary meaning it can last months. But they'll paint it on and run one season or something and they can strip it off and put something else on. But you don't have to play softball looking at soccer, goalie boxes or any of that. It just wouldn't be in your way. It's up to you how you do it, but that would, if you want to offer some flexibility, that would be the opportunity yourself.
Generally, what you would do in that situation, as you know, I know we have some folks from lacrosse here. If, you know, if we've got three fields going far as lacrosse goes, we would be painting that lacrosse field in a certain color. Then we would paint also a soccer field in a certain color so that there's discrepancies between the both. So that soccer could use it, lacrosse could use it. If we had football, we had football that they could use it. So it would basically be different colors so that you could justify the multipurpose use.
Is there any talk, are there going to be lights to extend the hours of it on any of the fields?
The plan is currently is that each of these fields will be lit.
Brad, is there, I mean, you're, basically the rec department's going to put policies together for practices, games, things like that. Since they are true multipurpose fields, even though they're across and work for softball. And the need base is for our private clubs, which is soccer club, Christiansburg Soccer Club and the lacrosse. And I'm glad Jeff and Katie could be here tonight and talk about how their programs are gaining popularity. But soccer program especially is one of our largest and it's private programs in the area. I guess, how do you envision, how are you going to sort of divvy up time? Because if, because if they're crossover into softball fields, I mean, a softball team or teams could actually rent all the spaces. Which, and that brings another sport into the mix to where it's going to be limited availability for, I mean, for the lion's share of youth participation in sports. So what's your vision of it?
Well, my vision is, is with the rectangular fields, you're going to see more rectangular sports that will be participating on those fields than the multipurpose fields. That's the vision that I see. My main thought process, and I think the group's main thought process with the multipurpose fields was we wanted to be able to make them as multipurpose as we possibly could. So if we can play softball on those fields, that's great. We can. But from a visionary standpoint, you know, we're looking at the rectangular sports for primarily for the multipurpose, lacrosse, soccer, football, rugby, those types of things for that. Now, if we get into a situation and, you know, we have a softball field there and there's a softball tournament per se that you can use that facility, it wouldn't be like every weekend. But if it's a weekend that you could use it, then that would be something that we would look at. But again, the vision would be primarily for those fields on the actual rectangular sides to be used for rectangular sports is what we would be looking at. And from a scheduling purpose, you know, I mean, it'll take, it'll take a lot of thought to make sure that you do this. But, you know, this is something that Chuck Muncie does right now currently with our athletic fields and does a terrific job with it. It's not an easy job because you've got so many different irons in the fire, basically. This is going to add another dimension to it, but I think this is a dimension that we much need and one that we look forward to working with so that we can really meet the needs of the citizens, you know, in all aspects, you know, whether it's, you know, softball, whether it's lacrosse, soccer, football, rugby, whatever it might be.
And I'll say this from my perspective, Henry, that I appreciate this probably from the girls' softball aspect. That's what I coach. That's what I enjoy. That's what my girls play. That's what I've been involved with for many years. When I look at the rectangular fields, honestly, I look at that white line as a theoretical white line. I don't foresee, I think what it does that allows us to, in bidding power, if you have the ultimate World Series on the softball, you can basically say now if you have an additional four fields, that will be available for a large regional or east coast type tournament. But I always, those white lines are there, you ask, it's theoretical. It just shows that we, it's so multipurpose. You can use it for so many different things because it's so big. But I don't have a vision that'd be used for softball at all up there on the recreational field. Not one bit. I just, again, that white line is there. I feel like that white line draws a lot of attention because it's a white line. But it's only to show that you could, if you needed to, if you could, if it came down to, you know, one weekend or it was a big tournament or something like that. I just want it to happen myself. But if it, you know, being that those would be, actually, that's not baseball. It'd have to be softball. Unless you're looking at eight-year-olds, nine-year-olds, maybe 10-year-olds on 225-foot fence line.
Henry, I can speak as a parent that has had a daughter that grew up playing softball. And, you know, she's older now, but the fight to get field time or to find a field that you can even practice on. I mean, I love the fact that we, you know, have a field on here because it's something that we desperately need. You know, we have been very limited through the years. The rec department's done a great job utilizing the fields that we have, but 10 years ago, they didn't look like that or we didn't have access to them. So I appreciate the fact that we do have one more field on there for the girls that's upcoming in softball.
I appreciate that. You know, the question wasn't to pit one sport against another. Who's participating more in this? Who's participating more in that? But there is a need and you can, and you can say there is a softball. I've served on council with court for a number of years and I know there's a need. I hear about softball every other week almost, so. You know, and we are paying for probably some of our past, not, and I think we have a, Brad, I think Brad's doing a great job. I think the rec commission's doing a great job. But you have to remember, the question was asked because Harcrater was initially presented to council with two multipurpose fields. And they were. I've seen the diagrams. But it's never been used for any multipurpose sports. So there is a concern there with lacrosse and soccer. And they are, when you talk about participation, or at least soccer, that's something I know. That's a huge churn out and really not a burden to the town tax dollars at all. So the concern is, since, you know, you've had one facility dedicated to one sport, which is typically baseball. Recently, I guess, they could share the, when it was not grassed-in field. There's concern there that is this going to be used for, and that's why I asked the question. I'm sure Brad will do a good job divvying it up time, but there is a concern there when you see that. When you see, you know, certain fields are only used for certain things, even though they were presented, designed, the council for, you know, multi-sports.
I think the one thing that we've got going for us with this particular conceptual drawing and thought process is the artificial surface. I think that's the most important thing of all this. I was pretty adamant about that to begin with. Because if you're going to use it as a multipurpose facility, you just can't do it with normal grass turf. If you do, you're not going to have a very good surface there.
Same here. I don't want to pick on anybody, but there's a certain baseball conflict within 20, 25 minutes of here. They do that and it's terrible.
Yeah.
It's a terrible surface.
So I definitely think that, you know, from a multipurpose standpoint, artificial surface is the thing that will really enable us to do a lot of things that maybe wasn't. I wasn't here when Harcrater was designed and built, but I think it'll enable us to do a lot of things that maybe was hoped to be done out there, but hasn't been done, but I think it can be done with this.
And to underscore what he's saying, our consultant did, the market assessment, also said that having turf fields would draw more out-of-town use if that's something you're interested in.
Just one question. I'm glad you brought it up, Ms. Dill. I didn't want to ask real quickly, Mary, if I may, but on the lacrosse, you're expanding by 20%, I think you said, in the last five years. You have membership, I guess, from all over. Is that?
Yes. Right now, about at least half of our members are Christiansburg.
And the rest of them, maybe basically in county, I take that maybe?
Yeah, we have some. We have Rhino, we have Brad from Blackberry.
Well, I think one of the things that we have to look at when we're looking at the three multipurpose fields and the softball field is, you know, revenue generation. I mean, if someone wants to come in and have a world-class softball tournament at that facility, they're going to pay for it. They're going to pay dearly for it. And I'm not too sure what, where we have thought. And I think we're way too early into the thought process. But, you know, what kind of rental are you going to charge the clubs and the soccer and the lacrosse in this first?
And I think that's the next step, guys, moving to that.
I mean, there will be a field that I do say.
I think that's the business plan. And, you know, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I mean, obviously, we want to take care of our citizens first. That's the most important thing. But along with that, by being able to add facilities like this, we're taking care of our citizens. But we also have the opportunity to sort of be an economic impact engine and be able to bring folks in to the area of soccer tournaments, lacrosse tournaments, you know, a variety of different things. And, you know, you could easily envision, you know, seeing a lacrosse tournament on these fields, a swim meet at the aquatic center, and a baseball tournament at Harcrater. You know, I mean, you could easily envision those things. And I think when, you know, we get down to it, those are things that are pretty important to us.
I asked one question of Brad before, maybe you too. I, you know, we have so much going on here and the maintenance sheds, the maintenance area. All of you are pretty, feeling pretty good that we have an adequate amount of space here to store all this equipment?
Yes. During the planning process, we had a number of meetings with the steering committee. And we talked about actual equipment that they would have. And we do, we do feel like it's adequate.
And we actually started initially with just the maintenance building, but with input from, from the group, there was a pole barn added for that, for that very reason. Make sure there's adequate space for, for outlets to store.
It's very similar to the size that's currently at Harcrater. And the one downside of Harcrater is, is we take up the majority of our maintenance space with mowers, tractors, and those types of equipment. So you have nowhere to move when you're in there. So hence the reason why we decided to go a sort of a less expensive route and do a pole barn so that it's actually, it covers our equipment, but it opens up still maintenance space there. Then, you know, and JD will get into this a little bit more, but another area up next to the artificial surface area, we would also have storage there. Also a little bit of the softball field, if I'm not mistaken, on the end of the dugout.
And I haven't started talking about that building yet. So before we move on, I'm going to circle back to that. But good discussion. Any other questions before I come back up?
I'm sure you guys have thought of this, but I was wondering the distance between the fields, just as far as fans, like where parents that cheer from?
Yes. They can locate in between depending on which side the team's on and which side. You know, one side would be dedicated to team, the other side would be dedicated to parents by sitting to watch the game.
Okay. It's hard to, it's hard to tell how much they
It's about 50 feet between those fields.
There would be portable seating is what we would use, portable bleachers and portable stands. That way you can use it or you can take it all.
And backing up, we mentioned, this building will serve both the multipurpose fields, but it will serve field one as a press box. And it will also serve the softball field as a press box. It's a two-story building. JD will show you in a second exactly what it looks like. It'll have restrooms in it and it has some storage as we were just discussing. The last area we're going to talk about is the passive use area and the open spaces. And this is an enlargement of that same area we were just looking at. I'm going to start up here in the upper left-hand corner. There's a small stormwater retention fund. We talked about all the network of leisure trails that will run through the park and tie together. But there's a series of trails here. And then there's three meadow areas, one here, one here, and then a large one here. This is a picnic pavilion and it'll have restrooms in it. It'll be served and shared by parking lot from the multipurpose field. So you have direct access there. This will be an iconic field, so you have direct access there. This will be an iconic picnic structure, it's actually on the high point of the meadow, so it kind of sits up on a hill. And then there are two small picnic structures here and here, that'll serve this large meadow area, and then be also on that network of leisure trails. All these areas will have to rely on adjacent parking, so this meadow area would rely on parking from the core area, this meadow area would rely on parking from the core area or the multipurpose fields, this meadow would rely on parking from the multipurpose fields.
And we're back, I'm going to turn the floor over to JD to talk about the buildings.
So when we began talking about the buildings, we first talked about how the architecture of the building could serve as the identity for the park. And that moved into a discussion of, of what's around the park, and one thing that kind of caught my eye, and I live locally here, so I've watched the construction of the bridge, the new bridge across the upper stair there. And I liked the, the feeling of permanence, you know, it's, it's a massive structure, and it feels permanent. So that's how I presented, that's an idea I presented to the steering committee, and that was well received. So that's kind of the direction we took when we, we began designing the buildings, with a feeling of permanence. So as we look at the amphitheater pavilion here, you can see we, we use materials such as standing seam metal roof, fiber cement siding, and timber frame construction, all conveying a feeling of permanence, and all low maintenance materials, locally sourced as well. With the amphitheater pavilion, the thing that kind of drove this was the idea of a portable stage. The town, the steering committee talked about purchasing a portable stage that could not, not only be used here at the park, but downtown or elsewhere. So that really drove designing the size of this pavilion. And the idea is that that stage can be pulled in under the front of the pavilion here, and in plan, we've kind of shown it dashed in. And the stage that we designed around it, it's about twenty-eight feet tall when it's extended. So that really creates the rigging and the lighting structure, kind of a plug and play environment, so that you're not building that infrastructure into this pavilion. So you can see the timber frame construction up front here, and that would carry throughout the, the building. It's situated on the site plan, so that the rear of the building looks out over the pond. So you'll see the back of the building, the roof slopes down to a lower, almost back porch kind of feel, so that there can be some seating on the back side of that, looking out on the pond there. And then the front side, of course, is the high side here, facing the lawn, that would serve as seating. Within the structure itself, there's a, two family restrooms for storage, there's also a fireplace here in the middle. And as Kyle mentioned, this could, of course, serve for events that may be involved with the stage, but it can also serve as corporate event or just a family reunion place, but it's not serving the concert venue. You heard Kyle mention the hilltop pavilion, this would be at the highest point on the site. And so the idea here is a, a medium-sized pavilion. We have basically three different size picnic pavilions on the project, a small, which is twelve feet by twelve feet, a medium-sized, which is twenty-four by twenty-four, and that's this one. And then the larger pavilion we're considering is the amphitheater pavilion. So this has a little bit different architecture than the other medium-sized pavilions. The other pavilions have a bathroom associated with them, this one does not, it's open, looking out to be used off to the north. And it's the same architecture of timber frame, standing seam metal roof, stone, column bases, and again, that feeling of permanence and, and low maintenance. We talked a bit about the maintenance and support building, and as Brad mentioned, this is, the maintenance building is similar in size to the one at Heart Raider, and it functions in a similar way too, in that here's the maintenance bay, there's an overhead door on this side and this side, so it's, it's pull-through function. There's an office associated with this building, as well as a restroom with a shower, and a break room with a small laundry area. And we heard from staff that the, the break room and the restroom with the shower were really necessary because of sometimes the long hours they work, I guess, preparing for a tournament, and it's nice to have a place to clean up, if they want to stay for a game, or if they're staying there during the play of the tournament. Associated with that area, Kyle mentioned the pole barn, and this is just an open pole barn structure, simple construction. It's about forty feet by fifty feet. As I mentioned, there are three different sized pavilions, and here, the small and medium are represented here. Again, the small is twelve feet by twelve feet, and you can see the same feeling of permanence, timber frame construction.
Is that, is that twelve by twelve, or so into the roof side, or is that the slab side?
It's, it's actually the column locations.
Okay.
So the column, the space is about twelve feet, about twelve feet. Same with the medium-sized pavilion here, so it's about twenty-four feet by twenty-four feet between columns. And each medium-sized structure has a restroom facility associated with it. And you can see same architecture of the other buildings with cement board siding and the timber frame construction. The playground and splash pad building is situated here. It's actually two separate buildings under one roof. We'll begin with the, the building to the left here, this is the multi-use room, that can be rented for birthday parties. And the idea is that these are, are glass overhead garage doors, they can be opened up, so that this can actually be an open-air pavilion, looking out onto the playground that sits adjacent to right here. Associated with this building is also an office space with windows, with good views of the splash pad, as well as the playground out this way. And then there's a family restroom that opens on to the multi-use room there. Now, in the building to the right, we have a men's and women's restroom, part of those is dedicated to a changing area. And then we have two family restrooms right here, and then mechanical space to serve the splash pad, as well as the building infrastructure itself. As I mentioned, the two buildings are under one roof, so we provided a deep overhang for covered seating area, so this would serve more of the splash pad area, it occurs right here. And then again, thinking of it as kind of a back porch, wrapping around this side, would serve more of the playground area.
Mr. Price, you probably already said this, I think you did, but those restrooms on the right side that are serving the splash pad, those are the extra-large family slash changing red-type restroom, is that right?
They are, yes, yes. There are two of those family restrooms there, so those are kind of single use. There's also changing dressing areas within these, these, we call them gang toilets, so that's not a great, not a great term. And again, the same vernacular with the timber frame construction, lap siding and metal frame, or standing seam metal roof. So the, the soccer complex building is situated between multi-use field number one, located here, and, I'm sorry, multi-use field number two, located here, and parking area located here. So the idea is, on a tournament day or some ticketed event, you purchase your, your ticket, you're at the ticket booth, which is the first thing you come to here. You enter through the gates, and then you immediately enter into, or under this roof structure. Again, this is two buildings covered by one roof. Two restrooms are available to your right here. As you come through, to your left is a concessions area with two concessions windows. And then there are two family restrooms, single-use toilets right here, as part of this building. And as you come through, the view, the view of those three multi-use fields open up, opens up in front of you. And again, we provided some deep overhangs here for covered seating outside of the concession stand, and then a bit of an area for covered seating outside of this building, both facing out onto those multi-use fields. And one thing I forgot to mention, as part of this building, there's a tournament headquarters space that would serve for a tournament organization, and a small storage space to serve the concessions building as well. The softball press box and support building, it lies between multi-use field number one and the softball field here. So it serves as press box for both fields. It actually has a second floor press box, I'll get to it in a moment. But looking on the first floor, and Brad mentioned this, this is a storage area, a fairly large storage area for the grooming machines that would be used for the artificial turf, as well as supplies that would be used for painting lines and what have for those fields on that side of the park. There are four single-use family toilets here, two on this side and two on this side. And then there's an umpire's locker room here, as well as a small mechanical space. And see, this is the stair leading to the press box. And again, we provided a deep overhang of the roof to provide some sheltered seating areas on both sides that look out onto either the softball field or that multi-use field. As you go up to the second floor, you can either turn left or right to go into separate press boxes serving either the multi-use number one field or the softball field. And those press boxes have windows across the front and on the, the side to enable good visibility of the game. And again, the same architecture as the other buildings with the timber frame and the lap siding and standing seam metal roof.
Mr. Price, if I could mention on this one, I just want to, you know, make folks understand and be aware, what we're looking at is that first artificial surface rectangular field as being our primary main game field. If we have, you know, I don't know, if we had some type of soccer championship, lacrosse championships, or whatever, that would be that premier field that we would be playing on. And it just made sense to be able to save from making another building is being able to do a press box for both locations out of that one. You know, from a softball perspective, it's not the most ideal location, generally it's behind home plate, but I worked at Rappi University, and we, we worked for many years with a, with a press box on the third base side, just like this one would be, and it was sufficient. Far as lacrosse, soccer, or football goes, it's pretty important to be able to have that press box as close to the middle of the field as possible. So that's why that particular press box is in the location that it is.
Brad, what kind of coverages are you going to have for field two and three, as far as scoreboards, you going to operate the scoreboards, is there a dugout type thing? Would there be something built that will, I mean, you, I don't, I don't conceptually see any way you can service that far field from the, the entrance building.
No, we wouldn't do that. Basically, what will end up happening is, what the design will be, is there would be conduit underneath the actual turf fields, and, and basically there would be locations there where you just pull a section of the turf up, and there would be connections there for scoreboards, P A systems, and those types of items. We would basically do a temporary setup at that point with like ten by ten tents and tables there. That way, anything on the actual surface of the artificial surface can be set up and can be removed, you know, that way you've got a large open spot. So that was, that's sort of the mindset of, of doing those types of things. So anything there would be temporary and would just be set up, just as I was mentioning earlier about like the player benches and fan stands and those types of things, those would all be portable, be moved out and taken on.
There's one question you haven't asked, or is it?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, this place, you'd like the rec center, or the twice center, we have staff there. I won't have any staff here. So if you have any place, somebody gets hurt, first aid station or?
No, the, it's a good question. I think in the details of the construction document, design, planning, we need to provide kind of first aid measures out here. But I believe you've got set up so that we can have some office space, we've got an office, tournament in court, an office at the soccer complex, we've got a, that's the office space here at the main heart of this core area, and then again, of course, the main facility itself. So we have an opportunity to have some actual staffing on, on campus as a work.
And we will need staffing there. It's going to be very important, very imperative to have staffing there. The other aspect of it is, is, you know, from the actual artificial turf aspect of it, you know, and, and one of the discussions that came up was, you know, wanting people to be able to go and, and come as freely as they possibly can, you know. While that is a wonderful idea, you have to have some structure with it as well. And, and you know, at that standpoint, you would have to operate it somewhat similar as, as the recreation center to where you have staffing there, you know, to ensure that the facility's taken care of.
Like, uh, what we're doing with the Huckleberry, would you have those blue safety cones anywhere throughout this?
Well, that definitely would be something that we would really want to have, you know, with the infrastructure of, you know, as we move forward, that will, that will be a huge aspect to have throughout the walking trail. So yes, that answers your question, that is something that I think's in there, of course, that I have. You know, we are looking at it, and that's the, the bikeway, walkway committee is, we've given them a list of areas that we think would be very beneficial to have those types of towers, you know, with our current facilities that we have. They are basically on the process of, of moving forward to try to get sponsorship for those types of things. So once this facility comes into play, that will be another area that, that we would do. The other items would be Wi-Fi throughout the park, and, you know, all kinds of different geo, you know, mechanisms and those types of things, to be able to get a little bit more updated with today's society. And I think that all those things are pretty important. And one, one reason we had a, the steering committee is we had a member from the I P committee on there because we wanted to have that vision as we move forward of what we need to do in those types of things.
Brad, are we looking at any type of security grid at all for this, cameras in particular areas, that's something to discuss later?
Uh, I think it'll be something that's discussed later, but I, I definitely think that's something that we would look into. You know, when you have a facility that large, you know, we have security systems here.
Right, right.
It's, it's important to have those security systems, and I think that's something we would definitely look at down the road.
Would this be connected in any, any way, that, we have a really awesome early warning system for, I guess, lightning, that's a mouth, yeah, and stuff like this, would this be tuned into that, where it'd be kind of more of a self-serve, kind of alert?
We would still use our, we would still use our current weather system that we, that we currently use now, which is a shower electric, which is N C A approved. There are ways to tie into that system, to when lightning approaches within the ten-mile radius of what our lightning policy is, that an alert system would sound, you know, it could be sirens, it could be a lot of different things. So that would be something that we would look at in the future, once we get into a little bit more detail of the actual thing itself.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, just on the ball field, that's a really awesome thing to know that we've got that.
Well, and I, even beyond that, the playgrounds, the open areas, you know, all of those areas, to be able to have that type of alert system, I, I think's very important.
We'll, we'll be open twenty-four seven.
As far as the park goes, you know, most of our parks right now currently close at dusk. That'll have to be something that we discuss as we move forward, you know. Our athletic facilities, we, we generally meet the curfew that, that's required by the town, so that's when we would shut the lights off and those types of things. And at that point, everything will be shut down. We did have, we do have. We did have, we do have lighting to the facility as far as the shelters and those types of items go, just for the sake of fact, if we do have, you know, whether it's local league games going on out there at nighttime or what, just so that we have lighting for the shelters, if teams want to be able to go there, parents want to be able to go there and do those types of things, but that will definitely have to be something that we'll look at, but right now, currently, our parks are set up from an actual park perspective from dawn to dusk.
A fellow asked me, he said he could not make it to the meeting today, but he wanted me to ask, and I asked Brad before the meeting, and I figured out now, he was interested in basketball goals, and Brad mentioned to me that maybe some places in parking lots, we're going to put up some goals there, I thought that would be conducive for you guys. I thought that was fine.
Yeah, I think that if you look, if there's a lot of different, some of the newer schools that are built in this area, you can see out in the parking lots of the areas that aren't used consistently, they have basketball goals that are, that are listed right there beside of that actual parking lot, those types of things, and I think those are things that can be done once we get into a little bit more detail. And quite honestly, I think you look, you know, at the time, whenever the park is, is open, and you look at areas that maybe are not used quite as much as others, and those will be the areas that you would look at, or, you know, put like a goal or something there.
And one more thing, I think we're going to have another meeting in, in June, and we're going to talk about finances. Is that right, about the gas line and how much this will cost, and maybe how much to keep it up every year, how's that go?
Yeah, so thank you. It's a good transition, because I've got a number for you today. The, and we can, we are working already with, basically arriving at this plan now, building plans put together, clarity on what this is. I've kicked off the business plan, backed pros consulting, they basically say, we've got building plans, we've got staffing, it's to understand, we've got art, we know what's artificial, what's natural, start developing that business plan. That will take about two months. I just learned last week that one of the primary, the right hand of the gentleman we've been working with, she just went out with a premature baby born, so I guess the baby's fine, but she's out on maternity leave, so, but we're, it's going to take a two-month kind of process to get back and forth, and that'll be with town input. There'll be a couple of drafts during those two months, it won't be just disappear for two months and come back. But the business plan really is one of the most important pieces to put legs under this. Otherwise, you have no idea kind of what you're getting into, you're jumping in blind to an unknown. Suffice it, I think it's going to cost money to own and operate this, there's no doubt about that, but it's a question of how much, what are, what do you expect revenues, what does it cost to maintain these kinds of facilities with staffing and mowing and artificial turf? All of that is going to get put into this splash pad, what those bring. The business plan puts all that together. That's, that is starting now, and should be before June for sure, we'll be able to, yeah, I was shooting for the end of April, but I think given the situation we're in now, we'll be creeping into May, put that up with that. But the, the current cost us that we have right now, the hard cost for this, and again, I can't find it, you might it all off at once, but if you were to develop all of this, pedestrian, period, the pond, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, all of it, the hard costs alone are about $27 million. When you put in contingencies or construction contingencies, soft costs for designs, also land acquisition costs, that, that number right there, you clear, covers the road all the way up to Cameron and the roundabout. I'll make sure that's good. That's a, that's a four and a half million dollar piece of roadway.
And 27 million covers all that, though.
Yes, of the hard costs. When you throw in the land and the engineering and the some of that land acquisition down here, really the whole thing to go all the way, all of this and out to Cameron, that roundabout, is at just north of $33 million. So we can, it's a lot, one of the pieces, you know, so the more to come, right? We're not done today. There's a few things yet to come, beginning with, watch the clock now, we've got 12 minutes to our open house across the hall. And then the traffic impact, we did a study with phase one at this intersection in Fruit Park. We're now actually starting the process to study the rest of the impacts throughout the whole Bingham Hills and all the back over to North Franklin, and what are the impacts going to be there? That's, that's starting underway, that'll be happening in the next two months. And we have, we've wrapped up draft versions now, and I hope we have, we can pin down engineering staff next week at the town to start reviewing store art feasibility, utility master plans, and even the phasing discussion. The phasing does, it's going to be one where I'm going to probably have to get back with you all when the business plan starts coming in and have some phasing discussions, because if you say today, and I've got $33 million, well then great, I don't believe you, but if you said that, we need to go phasing and discuss, we'll just take off and go. But if, if we start giving some direction on how, how many phases, how small phases, and then, then this is going to become the question, well, which things first? So phasing is not something I'm going to be able to do alone, just jump in on my own, live with what you got.
You were talking about beginning phasing costs for beginning complete construction, hard costs, everything, and basically that's where we've developed and then it segments, basically.
Right, if you're starting to say, you know, we got to do the road first, or maybe it's just two lanes.
Now, that makes sense, the road first and the park back. I'm going to be honest with you, my perspective, I'm not too big with the rest of you, I don't look at phasing. I look at total costs and I look at, at project costs. And even when you get down to phasing, the problem running through there is, again, I'm looking at one bond cost, if I'm looking at bond, looking at all this as a single, as much as I can, but I know it's a big jig, a feeling, kind of.
Yeah, if we built the whole thing at one time, including the aquatic center debt, we'd be selling about $4 million a year just to service the debt.
Right.
So getting used to bumpy roads, guys.
Well, and that's what I like about the business plan, and that is our next step, let's be honest. And then with that, though, comes our opportunity to grant, obviously as part of the R P process was, happy individuals who can help us to find, what I call free money, matching money, things like that, but also that operational cost, now, we really want to develop truly, that's not going to be developed at the same time as the actual construction project total cost is, if we're going to have two different, a business plan itself is going to talk about, basically bifurcated, projections for project costs and then operational expenses, correct?
Right, yeah.
And the one thing that, getting to his, his question of phasing, is that if you do plan on phasing the park, you'll want to have the business plan reflect that, so that if you're just, say you're doing all the passive use stuff first, low, you know, low operational costs, but you get into the active athletics, and if you don't build all of them at once, then you want your business plan to reflect that.
Absolutely, we want the business plan to be accurate, we want to make something you can look at, so I understand.
You know, the way I see it here, this gas line is probably phase one, right? I mean, you don't look down to this phase one, but you'd have to go that first.
The gas line phase this summer for the connector road, that is phase one.
What's our window then, Trevor? When they, when they break ground, they open that up, they do a segmentation type line, they segment that, but what time do we, what's like that?
They had, and they had laid out July 11th through this day, they had a kind of a two-week window where they're doing their work. We won't be able to do the work in those same two weeks, because they're actually testing that line.
I guess I'm looking at what kind of window do we have, we're looking at taking advantage of that opportunity, to say we're getting segmentation.
We're going to have to insert time into their schedule, they didn't have an extra two weeks in there, but my guess is it's going to take two weeks for us to do, or to have them do for us that replacement piece, and then, then they're testing balls after that.
So our opportunity time is going to be between two or three weeks, and that's about it?
Yeah, yeah. It'll be short, I mean, it's a...
You mentioned six digits. Can you put some digits in those six digits?
Yeah, I really don't know. I begged, pleaded, and told, and asked them for like, come on. I, I told them in the email, I said, I didn't know if that means $150,000 or $550,000, what does that mean? I'd be just guessing.
If we phased this project out, I would never have caught our...
I'm sorry?
If we did the project, I won't phase them, and phase their phase, but would the cost be higher doing it that way?
Yes, yeah, like anything, it would, to remobilize, come back again, again, you would, and, and just the cost of construction, your X versus X plus 10, you know, things are escalating, but, you know, it comes down to how much can you tolerate, how much can you bear, and give it time.
Also, it becomes very political, who does what first?
Yeah, yeah, you can't help but see the, do you build up this piece or that piece?
It would be like the aquatic center, which do we do first? If we're going to phase that, do we do the family fun pool first, and then 10 years down the road, we do the 50-meter pool?
Yeah.
It's not how it works. It gets very political, and those of you who don't know Cor, could you guys tell he's a poker player? I mean, he is all in, but I just want to let everybody know. I want to let everybody know, council wouldn't have taken these steps, I mean, we've spent some significant money. Phasing is going to be discussed. The one kick, the bootle is going to be discussed as well, and it could get political in there, but council's serious about doing this. We would have to put the commission through this, our consultants through this, A and L through this, and spend this kind of money to just sit here and, you know, we're going to build the amphitheater and let everybody, everything sit for another 20 years.
Well, let him say, we're going to be financially responsible with the going forward, and I, I look at that total type of approach myself, but it all comes down to dollars, cents, it all comes down to numbers, and I, I trust that the numbers we're going to get will be very accurate, and we have to be able to work with accurate numbers when we look at this. That's why I appreciate you all taking the time and making sure those things are very, yeah, very accurate.
Once we get the word to go, I'll, if we did it all.
Oh, gracious.
Three years, two years?
Yeah, you're talking years, not months, yeah.
And you'll think...
Yeah, yeah, the construction of the park itself, probably a year and a half, and then you're probably talking six, 12 months designing, a couple years, probably.
Just putting that road in, it's going to take some time.
Barry sitting on my shoulder grinning because he's retiring. That's somebody else's dog, grinning at.
Charlie, Trevor, I got, I got one question. As far as the gas line game, and I know there's another window there, when is, when does there have to be a decision made on that gas line, you know, if we were to take advantage of that this year?
I, I would think it's probably soon. I, I think we should be trying to make that decision here in March. I bet you April is the end of that one.
Trevor, well, and to make that decision, I agree with you, that's why I was asking about that opportunity window, that's why I think you kind of give a little principle what Steve asked, I mean, are we looking at 150 or are we looking at 550?
Or 950?
Exactly right, well, yeah, because, what I'm understanding is that if we don't do it now, we're looking at seven figures something, and just when we do take advantage of it now, now we're looking at, who knows, we're looking at six figures, which is better than seven figures, but there's a lot of, a lot of the big spectrum within that six-figure range.
And that may be something that I need Barry, is, is, we need to try and call, I think, the town manager to disagree.
But I guess what I'm saying is, we really can't make it all.
We have a meeting tomorrow.
So we have all those six figures to look at.
I, I understand, and I agree, because that needs to happen, needs to happen soon.
So, Charlie, we're getting, and there are lots of concept questions, and I'm sure that you and your staff are going to be out there doing this, that our people can talk to you on the side, but we've got about five minutes to move over and set everything up. So I, I'm going to, Diana, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I want to thank y'all again for all your hard work and everything you've done for us, and I'd like to adjourn the meeting on my side.
And I would, we want to do the motion to adjourn a work session, so I will adjourn our work session.